All right, it's seven. We got seven.
Seven o'clock.
Seven, yeah, seven oh one. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Mr. Perkins, Mr. Buckley, Mr. Praddy. The Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one at seven thirty P. M. At Hanson Middle School under Master General law, Chapter forty A, on the application of Rush. I'm sorry, how do you pronounce that?
Rashdi.
Rashdi?
Yeah.
Assad? For a special permit under the Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section six H. B. And Section eight D. And site plan approval under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section seven G. One, to allow for the operation of a convenience store with related signage at ten sixty four Main Street, map forty three lot one. Hanson assessors map. Property is located in flexible overlay zone and commercial industrial zone. This meeting was continued from May twenty fifth, twenty one, at seven thirty, and it was continued to tonight. August third, twenty twenty one. Anything new in here, Virginia?
No, it's just that email today from Paddy Assad just to say that they are not going to.
All right, so we have the applicant here tonight.
Yes.
If you guys could just bring us up to speed where we left off at the last hearing.
We were supposed to show like a plan of how we we were supposed to like the parking area and how it's supposed to be set. But at the moment, the landlord is not sure if he's going to sell the whole property. So he said he cannot lease it to us at the moment. So we couldn't really go forward unless we get an approval from him. So we're waiting to see if he's going to sell it, not sell it, and then go on with it. So I'm guessing would we have to re-appeal from the beginning, or we can just, once we have any update, we can just inform the.
Yeah, so, so. What we really need to do is we really need to kind of move in one direction or another with this. It's been continued a couple of times. And what happens is that just kind of creates a snowball effect and other applicants that are ready. It keeps pushing everyone off to where we're, you know, we're really not progressing forward. We're kind of on pause on this application. So it's holding up other ones that are ready to move forward, and it just keeps backing up our agenda. So, I mean, you have the option to, you could request to rescind your application rather than the board to necessarily take a vote to, you know, deny it or approve it. So that's an option. And then what you could do is you could refile, keep all your documents that you have that you've worked on and got so far. And you could just, you know, reuse those at a later date and reapply when you actually, when you get things under control. If the landlords decide to stay, you know, if he decides to keep the property, you can move forward, or if he sells it, maybe work something out with the new owner. So that would, that would probably be a good option for you.
That's, that works great.
Okay, so. So if you'd like to do that, you could just formally request to rescind your application without prejudice?
Sure, that's when we have the approval of the landlord to go on with.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, you would just request to the board. So you would just say, I request to rescind my application without prejudice. And then the board at that point, we could take a vote on that to accept that.
Gotcha.
So, but that would need to be done like tonight. Like if you, if you want to do that.
So how would we?
You state that to us, we have to have you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you, you have to state, you know, verbally too. So you would say, if I was the applicant, I would say, I request that the board allow me to rescind my application without prejudice.
Yeah, if you guys would allow me to send that, reset my application up here.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal of the application without prejudice?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on it, or? No, I think, I think it would be a good, we'd always love to see more business in the town. So hopefully you can get that, get that worked out and, you know, come back in and see us, so.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, a second, and there's no discussion. So all in favor to accept the withdrawal?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so three, zero, zero. You're all set, so the application's been withdrawn. So you can pick up where you left off once you get things ironed out with the landlord and definitely come see Virginia and reapply when, when you're ready, okay?
Great, thank you very much, you guys.
All right, thank you.
Are you going to keep the pizza store open?
Yes, that's staying open.
All right, it's seven fifteen. Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on May eleventh, twenty twenty one, seven P. M. Online via video conference on the application of Brian Reese for a special permit under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section six B. Six D., to allow for an apartment to be built into existing structure at two seventy High Street, map forty nine lot twenty nine, Hanson assessors map. Property is located in a residence A. Zone. This meeting was continued from May eleventh, then June eighth at twenty twenty one through tonight. In-person meeting at the Town of Hanson Town Hall Selectman's Meeting Room, August third, twenty twenty one, seven fifteen. We have the applicant and counsel here, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chin. For the record, Attorney Barry H. Crimmis of nine oh nine Washington Street in Stoughton here on behalf of the applicant, Brian Reese. As the board knows, I was not representing Mr. Reese at the original hearing on May eleventh or at the continued hearing on June eighth, I think it was. Subsequent to the June eighth hearing, Mr. Reese contacted us and retained us to represent him at this hearing tonight. I did have an opportunity, and it was actually, we were on the original meeting on May eleventh, if you recall, on the Egan Development Project. So I did have an opportunity to see the discussion at both the May eleventh meeting, as well as I watched the tape of the, of the June eighth meeting on cable. So I think I have a pretty good idea of what, of what the issues are, or maybe is, on this particular matter. I do have a memo that I'd like to give to the members of the board, if I may.
Sure.
But I think I can, I can probably, I'll hand this out, but I think I can summarize this pretty well for the members. There we go.
Mr. Perkins.
Thank you.
Buckley.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So. I know the members are familiar with the history of the site, but I do want to just go through briefly a little bit about the history that I think obviously is pertinent to, to the discussion. From some research that we did at the assessors office, and you'll see copies of assessors property cards as, I think exhibited C. One, C. Two, and C. Three. The indication is that this dwelling, which I don't think there's any disagreement today, is a, is a single-family dwelling, was built in nineteen twenty as part of the Plymouth County Hospital property. And it was built according to other information and included a copy of the town meeting vote from the special town meeting of, I believe it was nineteen ninety nine. You have a copy of it there as well. It refers to the property as being the superintendent's building. So I think the logical inference is as part of the hospital grounds, you know, they have the hospital building. I'm sure they had various maintenance structures, storage, buildings, and the like. And they included a superintendent's residence. So whoever the superintendent of the hospital was had the opportunity for he and he or she and his family to live there on the grounds. Not unlike, I used the example with somebody when I was discussing this at my college, there was, there was a president's residence built on the property. And so, you know, not uncommon in situations like that, large institutional hospitals, colleges, et cetera, to have a residence on the property. The indication again by the assessors records is that, again, the building was built in nineteen twenty, thereabouts. And throughout the, the information from the assessors office, it's referred to as a single-family residence. The town later purchased the property from Plymouth County, and then the town later sold the property to one individual. It was transferred into an L. L. C. And ultimately was transferred to my client, Mr. Reese. In nineteen ninety nine, prior to his purchase of the property, there was an A. And R. Plan, a proven not required plan, endorsed by the planning board that created the current lot on which that single-family dwelling exists. I think from my observation of the meeting, particularly the June meeting, I think the issue comes down to the distinction between the principal versus accessory use issue on the one hand versus the occupancy as a single-family dwelling on the other hand. We make no argument that the property, the dwelling, was not the principal use until such time as it was, the lot was self-divided by means of that A. And R. Plan. That's when it became the principal use. Prior to then, it was, particularly going back to when the hospital was in existence, it was clearly an accessory structure, okay? The principal structure was the hospital. All of the other buildings on the property, including the single-family dwelling, were accessory structures, okay? However, that's not what the bylaw talks about when it, when it talks about the requirements for the special permit that Mr. Reese applied for. The bylaw says to convert to a two-family, a, a single-family dwelling that was in existence at the time that Hanson adopted zoning, which was in nineteen fifty six. It doesn't say to convert to a two-family a principal structure or that it had to be a principal structure in nineteen fifty six. It simply says the single-family dwelling had to be in existence in nineteen fifty six, okay? So this dwelling was clearly in existence, was built as a single-family, has always been a single-family. So from the time it was built in nineteen twenty to the present, including, obviously, nineteen fifty six, it was a single-family dwelling. The only thing that changed by means of getting the A. And R. Plan was it went from being the principal use of the property, I'm sorry, went from being the accessory use of the property to now being the principal use once that A. And R. Plan was endorsed. But once again, the principal accessory use distinction is not what the bylaw talks about. The bylaw simply talks about the single-family dwelling being in existence at the time of adoption of the bylaw. And I think the board, you know, from its own knowledge and information, including the information I've provided to the board, which included a title exam, you know, the deeds, I did see, I think even in the May eleventh minutes, and I included those in there as well. I think it was Mr. Perkins who suggested to Mr. Reese, do some research, see if you can find something, maybe deeds, et cetera. And of course, the deeds, with the exception of the town meeting vote that I, that I referenced, that is in my materials, the deeds really don't say anything more than typically what a deed would normally say, you know? Grantor, convey, grantee, the land with the buildings thereon, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so very rarely is it going to be a distinction where it will say the land with a single-family dwelling thereon. You often will see that in a purchase and sales agreement, when it's described that way, but you don't typically see it in a deed, and you don't see it in the deeds that were in the chain of title that we obtained. So again, I think there was a distinction between, well, it wasn't the principal use until the lot was self-divided. But once again, that's not what the bylaw talks about. The bylaw simply says the single-family dwelling had to be in existence at the time of adoption of zoning in the town, which again was in nineteen fifty six, which I respectfully suggest to the board by all information available, this property was in existence as a single-family dwelling in nineteen fifty six. So we think it meets the criteria for the special permit applied for. It has forty thousand square feet, which is one of the other requirements under the bylaw, as shown both on the plan, the A. And R. Plan, as well as in the deed descriptions that refer to that plan, that refer to a containing forty thousand square feet. So once again, respectfully suggest to the board that the application meets the criteria of the bylaw and that the board has it within its authority to grant the special permit requested to convert it from a single-family to a two-family. The plan is, as I think you all know, the plan is to build, you know, a one-bedroom unit down in the lower level. And of course, Mr. Reese would need to get a building permit. That was indicated by the building inspector and his correspondence to the board. But beyond that, I think the, the legal analysis, again, would suggest that it does meet the criteria of the bylaw. So we happy to answer any questions the members may have.
So back to the previous meetings. I think a couple of the concerns we had, the first major one was that it was applied for as an accessory apartment, which is not an allowed use by, you know, permitted use or by special permit. So that was one concern that we had just in the way that it was applied, that we all agree that, yeah, you can do a single-family conversion. Structure existed prior to zoning, forty thousand square feet. So that was one of the concerns we had and the way it was applied and the way it was worded.
Okay.
A conversion to a two-family, like you said, doesn't alter the appearance. And I mean, that's kind of open to interpretation as long as it's not extremely altered. I mean, obviously, you have to do remodeling and whatnot, and that's fine. The other concern we have was that, that we were looking at it as an accessory, like you had said, an accessory use to the hospital. And I thought about this actually after the fact that if that were the case, the hospital was actually raised prior to this being subdivided, which I guess you could consider that that single-family was now, but before it was even subdivided was the principal use of that property.
That's actually a good point. Once the hospital ceased to.
I, I had done some research on my own after that because there wasn't much available to us at the previous meetings. And the hospital was raised, and that structure was still there. So in my opinion, that became the principal use of the property prior to even being subdivided.
Now, but I missed, I missed that point.
I always wanted to be an attorney. So I think, like you said, I think that's kind of addressed. And it meets the requirement of the forty thousand square feet. I don't really have any other concerns with it. Those two were my major. It was really just the, you know, the legality of it and the legal standing of it. And then the way it was applied for also, that, you know, we can't, that's not an allowed use, we can't say an apartment.
Right.
It could be converted to a two-family. Could it be a one-bedroom unit? Sure, there's nothing that says it needs to have a minimum two-bedroom, three-bedroom. But if it meets the, meets the requirements and whatnot, it, it can be issued a special permit. Any other board members? You guys have any questions, concerns?
No, not really. I was basically thinking the same thing. I. I'll just leave it to what you said. Yeah, I think the same thing.
I do know, I think it was on, on the Zoom last meeting we had, I believe, but I don't think there was any abouters. Are you in a butter here for this hearing? No, okay. I don't believe there was any that were.
Couple of phones.
The one that hadn't been notified, remember? Because Lotte Brown, the transfer hadn't made it.
Right, right, that's what it was. As the assessors hadn't caught up, someone wasn't notified, and a neighbor told them about it. But I don't recall there being any major concerns. Do you have anything, Josh?
No.
Okay. So I don't have the bylaw book in front of me, but, so the lot has forty thousand square feet. We agree on that. And the footprint of it's not being altered or anything. I mean, not.
Not going to change at all. The only, you know, it talks about exterior, and the exterior of the structure.
Yep.
The only thing that would change would be if it's required.
That was there.
The building inspector's here. If required in terms of providing the necessary access and egress, you know, to the apartment, that would be the only exterior change.
Right, right.
Not altering the footprint in any way.
And zoning can't prohibit that.
Probably.
And zoning can't prohibit that.
Right.
So. So this is, this is just going to be a, a one-bedroom or a studio unit? It's going to be a two-family, and it's going to be a?
Correct.
Okay. And these are the plans that you're still going with?
Yeah. Yes.
These aren't being changed or anything?
No.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, for purposes of the building permit application, he's going to have.
Yeah, yeah, some real architecturals or something, sure. But I, I would just suggest if that were to change to just update the board, you know, to get us a new copy if that were to change. But where it's all on the interior of the project, it's really just the use that we're looking at.
Right.
That, that's what it was, Sean.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any other concerns. I guess I'll entertain a motion. Someone wants to make one to approve the special permit for conversion of a single-family to a two-family that existed prior to zoning and contains forty thousand square foot lot minimum.
Out the, it's going to say address.
Yeah, at, I'm sorry, two seventy High Street.
So moved? Seconded.
Okay, so we got a motion, moved, seconded. Any discussion on it? Any further discussion? No, okay, roll call vote. Mr. Praddy?
Aye.
Mr. Buckley?
Aye.
And I'm an aye also.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Just a question about, we were saying once the hospital was raised, that then that house, the, a single-family became the principal use, the primary use.
I would think so, yeah.
Well, isn't there another building? Just curious, just curious. Just high, excited for that. Isn't that the beekeeper's thing or the food pantry, the same property that went subdivided yet?
Okay, seven thirty. Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on August third, twenty twenty one, at seven thirty P. M. At the Hanson Town Hall Selectman's Meeting Room under Master General law, Chapter forty A, on the application of Megan Moore for a special permit under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section six, six G., and a variance under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, Section seven B., table, table of dimensional requirements in Section eleven, I'm sorry, nine, B. Two, A. Through C. To allow for the construction of a twenty-nine-foot by twenty-nine-foot addition to the existing single-family home that requires a reduction in the minimum side setback from the requisite twenty-foot down to sixteen-foot, and to allow the proposed addition to be used as an in-law apartment at thirty Lakeside Road, map eighty-eight, lot seven A. Hanson assessors map. Property is located in a residence A. Zone. I'm Kevin Perkins. This is Sean Buckley, and Josh Praddy will be sitting on the hearing. Let's see. We have a letter dated August second, twenty twenty one from the Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer, Kerry Glass. I have seen him review the petition of Megan Moore, who is requesting a special permit under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws for the construction of a twenty-nine-foot by twenty-nine-foot addition to the single-family home that requires a reduction in the minimum side setback and allow the proposed addition to be used as an in-law apartment at thirty Lakeside Road. Property is located in a residence A. Zone. The office has no concerns regarding this proposal, although the side stair encroaches into what is proposed to be the sixteen-foot setback. It is considered a necessary means of egress access and should be allowed as drawn. An addition of a roof would be considered a continuance of the structure and would not be allowed in the proposed setback. Any permits required must be issued prior to the start of construction. Okay, I guess we'll open up to the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Kelly, Merrill Engineers. I'm subbing in for Dana Altavella, who's a licensed engineer.
Okay.
Of record.
Sure.
With me is Adam, the architect, as well as Steve Moore and Marie Clifford. Marie, it was daughter Megan is the other petitioner of record. And what Stephen, as I think you stated, is to propose an in-law addition for Marie so that she can stay in town and live with family. If it's easier for me to just put this up here, or?
Sure. We, we have copies. I mean, I don't know. If you want to set it up maybe facing the audience so they could see. Can you give her? Start the cycle.
Yes, please, thank you. Read this. So, as mentioned, the subject property is thirty Lakeside Road. The existing single-family home somewhere in the center, closer to the western side of the property. The site itself pitches from the west side to the east side, sloping, following the grades similar to Lakeside Road. And therefore, the addition ideally would like to be situated on the west side of the, of the existing single-family home, which allows for matching existing grade closer to the street, keeping a relatively flatter driveway than if we had to install it on the eastern side. It's a between, on average, about three or four-foot increase in grade change that would be required to be addressed on the eastern side of the property. Again, as stated, we're looking for, uh, relief with respect to the side setback from the required twenty feet down to sixteen feet. As, uh, mentioned in the Building Inspector's letter, there is, uh, an entrance, uh, stair and entryway into the addition. My understanding is that will not be roof, have a roof or anything over it, maintaining that it would not be part, considered part of the structure. Um, driveway enters into the site, uh, on the eastern, excuse me, western side as well, um, currently. The, uh, no additional clearing is required for the construction as well. All of this, the, uh, proposed driveway turnaround or expansion of the driveway is, uh, in the same location as the current driveway, so no new curb cut, um, is needed for this location. Again, um, the Moores understand the requirements of, of the special permit for the in-law, that, um, they maintain owner, um, owners of the property and the single-family home. And Marie Clifford is family who is looking to live in the in-law apartment. They understand that, uh, once this is not being used by a family member, uh, as an in-law apartment, it cannot be rented or, um, someone else, non-family member can, uh, stay in that home, uh, in the apartment, and that they would, uh, in the future, look to convert it to, uh, a garage. Um, we did, let me see, our potentials, show, show what that elevation of the proposed in-law would, uh, look like from the street, as well as in the future converting it to, um, a garage. So it's very consistent, um, so roof line changes needed, um, to make that conversion. They also understand that if the property was sold, the special permit would have to be renewed by the new owners of the property. Again, understanding the, finding a fact to the variance in the justification for, um, locating the addition on the western side of the property, uh, is conducive to the circulation of the home. Again, as I stated before, the, uh, eastern side of the road has, uh, a larger grade change that would need to be addressed. Again, we're looking to try to make it, uh, a safer, easily accessible in-law. And it also is helpful that the septic system is directly behind the addition so that it's an, an easy, quick utility connection, um, rather than trying to make it all the way across the, um, rear property to tie into the existing system. I think I've covered everything thus far. I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as Adam.
Sure. Well, why don't we discuss the special permit aspect of it first? So how many square feet is the, the exclusive area of the in-law? Looked, I came up with like around seven hundred, that sound about right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so it's under the, the max, which is, I believe, nine? Nine hundred? So I don't think that's an issue, you got one bedroom, I mean, it looks, it, it looks, you know, reasonable. I, I don't see any concern with that. Do you guys see a concern as far as, you know, size and layout and whatnot?
No.
I think aesthetically, I think it, you know, it looks good. So I, I think as far as the, the special permit goes, um, I don't see any major concerns. Now, with the side setback variance, what year was this house built?
Built two thousand and eleven.
Right, that's, that's what I thought, I thought it was a fairly new build, um, leaving it, I believe, probably a completely conforming lot and a conforming structure?
It, it is, correct.
So that, that, that is a concern, that we're taking a conforming, completely conforming lot and a conforming structure, and we want to make it non-conforming, on a new build that was, you know, it's ten years old. Um, we try to go the other way, you know, in respect to zoning, we try to make non-conforming, conforming. Again, I, I don't see an issue as to what you want to do with the use of it. I think it's great to be able to put space on and, and have family, you know, stay with you. I'm just looking at, looks like you pushed it back as far as you could and keep ten feet off your tank. I mean, is that accurate? Is there a way to gain a couple of feet that way and maybe shrink it up a little on the width and keep the same square footage, or?
So when it comes to the adjustments of the sides, obviously, we, we tried to stay within respect of, uh, the ten feet for the, for the tank. The issue that we're having is for, uh, if we wide, if we, if we shorten up the width, it's going to adjust the bedroom size and everything, it's going to basically squeeze it down into almost unusable space. With that, also taking into consideration of the future use, because they don't intend to use it as an in-law apartment for, you know, forever. They would like to turn it into a two-car garage, and if we, if we, um, if we squeeze it, you know, that's just.
Alright, so, so let's go with that, right? So you're going to pour slab, or is it going to be foundation?
It is going to have a, a four-floor foundation and be built for future use of the garage. So we're, we would pour a wall up, uh, and then build a floor on top of the foundation wall. We would be open to pouring slab if that's what.
Well, I was just wondering if, if with a slab, if you'd have an issue with your ten-foot setback on your tank?
Well, there's, having a slab inside the garage with, with a ten-foot setback?
I'm just wondering if it was a slab and not a foundation wall, would you have an issue with that ten-foot setback if you were to push it back?
I think it's ten feet, ten feet.
Yeah, I think it, I don't think that would be an issue.
I mean, would it be possible to relocate the septic tanks so you could, I, I mean, I'm just looking at this, that you, you, you're looking for a variance for four feet, and I, in my personal opinion, I'd really like to see you meet the setbacks. I, I don't see an issue with what you want to do, um, it's just the fact that we're going the opposite way of what zoning should be doing. And it's not, it's not an issue with the project or, or anything, it's just, you know, the, the legal aspect of it that we're taking a completely conforming property and we're looking to make it non-conforming. And that's really a concern.
So the, the existing septic system is, is raised on a, a higher level plane? It would be if it was on the, the left side of the house. So if we were to put it on the left side of the house, that would require us to have to pump it up as well, which would also be.
So your dimensions, you're going twenty-four, like, what's it, twenty-four or eight or something, twenty, twenty-four feet? I mean, you could put it on the left side and not require a variance.
A new septic system.
Why would you need a new septic?
Oh, you're saying, you're saying.
I'm saying if you put the addition on the left side, you wouldn't need a setback variance.
I think the concern is the group topography that we have on this side, at the, on the east side of the property is, uh, two to three feet higher, so that now you're having a steep, you know, a ten to thirteen percent driveway and, and more stairs to an in-law apartment where we're trying, trying to minimize the safety accessibility of that.
No, I, I understand, I, I mean, I'm just looking at options for you that I, I clearly, you have forty-eight point two, uh, from your fireplace bump out, which I'm assuming is poured, because if not, it wouldn't show a setback on it. So you're forty-eight-two, and if you take twenty-four off, you're still, you're, you're more than twenty. So if you were to put it on that side and got creative, maybe a small retainer wall and brought the grade up on that side, or relocated the driveway to that side, I mean, I, I don't see that as a, you know, real reinvention of the wheel. But I, I think, trying to resort other options as opposed to just looking to make this property non-conforming would be more respected. How do you, you guys have any comments on that? Josh, Sean?
Honestly, I'd have to agree with Mr. Perkins. While it may not be ideal for the flow of the home, but the proposed in-law on the left side of the property, as far as zoning goes, I think it's probably the better option.
With, with that being said, and I, I know this maybe won't be taken into consideration, partially, uh, we designed it on the right side of the house in order to keep, as you said, a shorter travel from a vehicle to the house. The, the primary resident that would be on the left side would be Marie here, and, you know, she would have to travel further. And she's been putting off knee surgeries to, you know, until she had a, a stable home that was easy to travel in and out of. So that was also something that was taken into consideration, along with obviously, um, additional costs to make this project feasible for.
No, I, I understand, yeah.
She's been a, a resident of Hanson for, for over fifty years. She's, she's just trying to basically live the rest of her life out of, um, easy, easy travel.
I will say from, from my own personal knowledge, um, if a slab were to be poured for the future garage plan, that you would be able to be, uh, move closer to a leaching field. I've installed a few septic's in my day. So that is a possibility that you may want to look into.
Okay. That would definitely help us with, with the length, uh, to, to gain some square footage. It just wouldn't help us with being able to fit two cars in there at the same time, for the future. And we're not trying to look too far in the future, because we obviously want her to, uh, you know, use, use the structure for a very long time.
I mean, to, to your point of that, you know, you're trying to save and reduce costs, and I, I get it, but I think to do this in-law and then say you're going to tear it apart and make it a garage would be kind of a waste of money as well. You know, I mean, and just looking at, you're probably going to spend a hundred fifty grand building this out.
Sure.
You know, and then to tear that apart and infill it and pour a slab to make it a garage, I don't think that's really going to happen.
They honestly have no intention of, of, uh, you know, building an apartment for themselves, they just want to take care of their mom.
No, no, I know, that's, and, and that's great, and like I said, I, I don't have any concerns in that aspect of the special permit, um, unless it's something I'm missing, I, I think it's, you know, the square footage is, is reasonable, it's not overkill, you know, pushing the envelope. I think it's going to look good. Again, my concern is just that side setback variance you're requesting on a brand-new build that's conforming. So, um, again, I, I would really like to see, you know, other options looked at, whether it be maybe to relocate it on the left, relocate the driveway on the left, maybe make it a little skinnier so you meet the side setback and make it longer, or maybe that's an engineering question you could look at that you could go close to that tank to make it longer, where it wouldn't count where it's a slab now, rather than the foundation, the cellar wall.
It, it will be, um, I, I miss a curve in your question about slab. It's going to have a full foundation all the way around, regardless. As far as a slab goes, um, you know, we probably wouldn't be pouring the slab right away.
So it's going to have a foundation, it's going to have a basement.
Full foundation.
It's going to have a basement.
Basement, it's going to have a four-foot frost wall.
It's frost wall and, and crawl space of some sort?
Yeah, it would have a crawl space just to access any, you know, future utilities that were underneath.
Okay. Sean, you have any comments?
Yeah, um, I have to agree with you with respect. I think that they should look into seeing if that can be relocated in some way a little bit, you know, especially based on what he said in his experience, that there's something that may be able to be done, and we're talking about four-foot width. And, I mean, I, you know, my personal opinion, I understand everything you're trying to do, and, my own feelings, would I like it to go that way, yeah, but I wouldn't also set precedence on other people's projects based on doing that. So as much as I'd like to, I think that we should try to shrink it in four feet, and try to figure out another way to get more square footage off the back a little bit and see if you can do something with that tank. You know, also given that you're doing the frost wall, and that's what I think.
Okay, um, do we have any, about it, sir? You're in about it to the?
Yes, I'm to the left side of the property.
Would you like to speak?
South Rockwell, forty-six Lakeside Road.
Forty-six, okay. Do you have any questions or comments or concerns, or?
No, it, it sounds nice and it looks nice. My only concern is if they were going to cut down any trees in between the house, uh, you know, summertime is granted, it grows in nice, and, uh, it's like a natural wall, so. Other than that, it looks great.
But if we put it on the other side, trees would be coming down.
There would be something that would have to come down if you switch sides.
Okay.
I didn't know there was that much growth in between.
Yes, sir. Okay.
And our concern would be the trees, uh, because we have, uh, this is a.
If you could just state your name and address, just for the record.
Carol Bellings, two thirty-seven Cross Street.
Thank you.
So we'd be about around the, the immediate side.
Yep.
And, um, our concern would be trees, it's heavily populated now with white pine, which has been problematic in the past. So I don't know if there's been any consideration, you know, towards removing those. Obviously, you don't, you don't want to jeopardize, or we certainly don't want to be liable for.
One of our trees falling down your new house, that's all.
Okay, yeah, that, that's a little out of the, the board's scope, um, really to get into that with, uh, you know, trees on neighboring properties and whatnot. But, um, so your concern really is just that if one of your trees were to fall on their newly-built structure?
Well, it's closer to our property line, so there's some significant area there.
Right, right.
It fell, it would probably not have any impact on their house.
Yeah.
They're building closer to the property line, and there's some wooded area there that we're just a little concerned about.
So your concern is just them moving a little closer to, their, their structure being a little closer to the property line?
We just wouldn't want one of our trees to impact what they're doing, and then be responsible. So we're just trying to figure out what is going on.
Okay.
We definitely did take into consideration throughout the design of, of trying to, uh, keep the existing lot without, you know, um, without cutting down trees or removing any of the existing landscaping. You know, that's something that every good neighbor knows, that having, having the, the trees and, and growth between is just makes, you know, uh, more, more privacy for each of yous. So that, that's something that we did take into consideration, and, and, you know, we're not planning on removing any trees. Um, and we're obviously going to be getting a little bit closer to them, but we, our intention isn't to remove anything. That's, you know, one of the other reasons that we stuck to the right side instead of the left.
Okay.
Minimal grading for the driveway.
What is the design capacity of that septic system that's there? Can that support the additional bedroom?
Um, our understanding from the records from, um, Board of Health is that it's for four bedrooms. The current home is three-bedroom, so it would, uh, be capable of, um, meeting the capacity of the additional bedroom.
Okay, and you're positive of that, that, that that's accurate, that?
That's our, that's our understanding. Yes, and it can be ver, uh, we can verify it, and we would definitely verify that with Board of Health.
The only reason I ask, I mean, it's not really relevant to, to zoning, but the reason I ask is that if you're going to have to do work to increase the design for of this system and do work, I think that's an opportunity to maybe do some shuffling around to make this meet setbacks.
It, it would be, but it's, uh, from what I understand, um, from the records, that it, it does have the capacity and would not need to be upgraded. But if that does change through the Board of Health, we can verify that.
Did Merrill do the original engineering on that property when it was built, or?
No, uh, land, land planning.
Land planning did, okay.
I think they're a local company.
Okay. So I guess it's kind of, you know, how, how do you guys feel as, you know, for the, for the applicants? How do you feel as far as, would you like to move forward and try to have the board, um, potentially take a vote on this tonight? Or would you like to maybe kind of go back to the drawing board a little bit and see where you can tweak and edit and, you know, just to, just to try to see if maybe you can just make it just a slight, slightly, and I'm not saying make it smaller, I'm just saying reshape it. You can keep the same square footage, or you could even go up to more square footage. We're just really concerned with you meeting setbacks. We're not telling you to take, you know, four feet off of it width-wise. We're just saying if you were to take four feet off, then make it longer. I mean, Board of Health, Board of Health issues are Board of Health issues, that's really not our, our scope. So that's, that's something that you would need to, um, you know, work out with, with your engineer and, and that stuff.
I, I understand, you know, uh, it's our intention to, to stay within the, the, you know, setback requirements and design, uh, zoning requirements as much as we possibly can. Uh, we, we feel that, um, you know, the current dimension, and, I mean, it, it is overstepping that boundary line and, that is unfortunate, but pinching it down is, and lengthening it, it isn't going to, uh, you know, solve the, the problem that we're having for Marie, so we'd really like to push forward with the, with the current dimensions.
I mean, what, what about taking some of the interior space of the dwelling to utilize that, I mean, I'm just.
Which, which we actually, we did as well, so the original idea is, is to create a mudroom for the existing dwellings that live in the house as well. And we actually took space out of their, that existing den and converted that to a mudroom. So we tried to push it over as much as we possibly could. You know, we might be able to pull it in, you know, a foot or something, if, if we, you know, maybe we could go back to the drawing board and pull it in a foot to maybe meet you guys that way, or maybe to.
I mean, the, the way I look at it is it's either conforming or it's non-conforming, I mean, it's kind of a black and white thing, and it's not, it's not an issue where it's, um, i- if it were pre-existing non-conforming, that, you know, we're making a lateral move, or it's a determination that it's not more detrimental than the, the existing structure and the existing setbacks. We're, we're taking something that's completely good, and we're making it bad, in zoning terms. Uh, and that, that is why the board is really concerned with that.
And I respect that, I, I understand that. In response, I mean, we, we are only four feet off the existing house, and we moved everything in as, as tight as we possibly could uh, in order to, um, you know, stay as close as to the zoning requirements as possible, but also the needs of, of the dwellings. And, you know, we, we looked into the future of, you know, the, what it would be turning into to also try and design it in a way where like, you know, this is what it's going to turn into, so it's not going to be an eyesore for anybody. You know, we, I know that we're asking for it to come over four feet, which is, which is a problem, I get that. But, but what we're proposing, it, I don't feel is, um, I think we've done it in a very tasteful way. And quite frankly, I mean, I, I believe that it's, it should be granted, it's, it's for a resident that's gone here for fifty years.
Yeah, no, and I fully understand that, and, uh, there's, the concern that this board has is, I don't know if you've been looking at all the signs around town and whatnot.
I have, I understand.
So the concern that this board has is that this is a pretty black and white issue. And that.
I understand that, I respect that.
If, if we were to potentially grant this, there's going to be a line out the door and down the street. It's not that we don't want to, in our personal opinion is, we'd absolutely love to, and my personal opinion is, I don't see an issue with this. But my zoning opinion is, I see this as an issue.
And I, I certainly understand your, your cautious, um, viewpoint on it. I don't believe that the citizens of, of Hanson will have a line out the door for something like this. I think that they have a different viewpoint on whether they'll have a door, but I don't think that this is one of them. I think that they would look at this design and see that it's done in a way that, that is with intention to, you know, provide or extend life into this.
Yeah, yeah, no, the, the, what it is, is there just needs to be consistency with decisions we're making, the votes that we're taking, and to not grant some and to grant others. I mean, it's just, it's, uh, what we're doing is now we're, we're deviating from our interpretation of the bylaws to now our opinion of what the bylaw should be. Because is sixteen feet sufficient? My personal opinion, yes.
Sure.
But the, the bylaws say it should be twenty. So it's, so it's, it's black and white and for me to interject my personal opinion and say that's sufficient, it's tough. It's a slippery slope and it really puts us in a jam. So I mean, I guess again, if, you know, if you, if you guys want to move forward with taking a vote on this, we can, we can take a vote on the special permit, we can take a vote on the variance, or if you, you'd like to, you know, just take some time to really, really think this through and try to see what you can do with it. I mean, those, those are your options as the applicant. The board can.
Well, I think the, the reason for having a zoning board is just for discussions like this. It's not about, you know, other situations that's going on or has gone on or whatever. You know, the zoning board is to make sure that, you know, we're following the rules. But also when there's a situation that, a special situation where something can be looked at and that something can be taken into consideration, that's, that's what these meetings are for. And that's what we're, we're going for. So would you like to take a vote as tonight and make some adjustments? You're asking?
I mean, if you like, I mean, the board could take, you know, it's two separate votes on the special permit and the variance. I mean, if you were to, I guess, be granted the special permit, you could move forward with the project, you just wouldn't be able, you would have to move forward with the project to meet setbacks. I guess would be the way I, I would look at it.
Mr. Perkins, if I may. I'd just like to put on record that the applicant is an old high school teacher of mine. So I will not be able to vote on this particular.
Well, I think you can vote out of necessity.
Until, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on this matter until I speak with the ethics committee and file a notice with the clerk's office.
All right.
So.
No, you look familiar.
I know, right?
So you, you would still have two, two voting members that, if you'd like to, us to take a vote on this or if you'd like to continue?
Can we take a five-minute recess? Can we talk about this somehow? Is that, is that, I don't know.
Three for a special permit.
Three for a variance and two for a special permit. Yeah, if you'd like, we can take a five-minute recess and we'll reconvene at 8:08.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, welcome back. It's 8:09 after our five-minute recess.
I think our understanding is that if possible, if we can still vote on the special permit and then we could move forward and see if we can do some tweaks to maybe not.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I think we would have to take a vote on it as a whole. I mean, two separate line items, we could vote on both, but I think they both would need to be voted on tonight or we'd have to continue the hearing to another date. So I guess those would probably be the two options and then the, you know, if the applicant, you know, wishes to, out of necessity, although it's been disclosed, you know, they, they are familiar with each other years and years ago, I personally don't think there's a conflict with that, but if, if the applicant's okay with them voting on it, with Mr. Praddy voting on it, and if he's okay with voting on it, then we could do that, we could go forward.
Because I think you need all three.
We do, we do. Is the applicant okay with?
Voting on the special permit?
With, with Mr. Praddy voting on it.
On the special permit tonight?
Well, it would be on the special permit and the variance. I think we either need to, you know, vote on the, vote on it all together or.
So all or nothing?
Or, or continue it. It would be two separate votes we could take, you know, one for the special permit, one for the variance with, you know, they, they could both go either way, but I don't think we can vote on one and then continue the hearing on the other, I don't believe, because it was all one application.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, so, so the applicant would be okay with Mr. Praddy being a voting member on this?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Praddy, are you comfortable with that out of necessity that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable making a decision on this matter.
Okay. All right, so is there any further comments from, any abuttes?
Well, we, we would never really afford, what other options are available to abuttes? I mean, absent any type of legal counsel, are there, what options, what other role does an abutte play in?
If you have any concerns directly related to the project, I guess.
The, the concern I voiced earlier was about the trees.
Yep. And your concern was, again, just to recap, your concern was with.
Liability.
Liability of your trees.
Correct.
Okay, I, I think that's just a legal issue and I don't think that's, you know, anything to do with, with the board, I don't believe.
Your concern would be resale of our property in the future if, you know, are we going to run into any obstacles if we put our, our property on the market for, for sale? Is there going to be a process that, that we have to seek?
Other than this property being four feet closer to the property line, it's still not encroaching on your property. And there are plenty of properties with structures like that close or closer to property lines and, and my opinion, I don't think that's going to adversely affect your property or affect the resale of your property. We could get, I mean.
That's the, that's the board's opinion?
That's my opinion.
Current zoning and bylaws today, what happens tomorrow, we, we don't know what happens tomorrow and.
It happens tomorrow as far as what? The bylaws being modified or something?
Changes within the board?
Yep.
Changes within your board?
Yep.
Town council, bylaw changes, et cetera, et cetera. That would be my concern as an abutte going forward, whether it was next week, next year, next decade, when we sell our property, are there going to be ramifications?
Act of the scene in the future.
No, I mean, I, I. Sure, if you'd like to make comment.
Just my opinion. I understand your point of view and question. My idea is for this design, in addition onto their house, would bring property value to their property, which would also increase property value for the neighbors around for resale. That's just my, my personal opinion, you know, take it for, you know, I'm not trying to press my opinion as what it is on you.
I understand.
We know another side, that's why we can just figure out this one.
I think that just if they're improving the value of, just like in any town, when you improve the value of, of your neighbors, it, it improves the value for neighborhood.
Yeah, again, again, sir, just the board, I mean, we really can't, we're not attorneys, obviously. We do have town attorneys that do advise us sometimes. We do like to play attorney once in a while, but we're not, we're not attorneys. But I personally don't think that this is going to adversely affect the resale or anything of your property. And as far as trees and liability, I mean, those are hugely considered an act of God. I mean, the only way that you can really, I think, be held accountable for a tree would be if someone were to put you on notice that, hey, your tree is rotted, it's deteriorating and you neglect to do anything about it and then it were to come down. And again, these are just my opinion. But I, I just, I don't see this project impacting your property, you know, in a negative way. It doesn't look like they're really changing any grading, water runoff. I don't see anything like that being a concern. So. Is there anything else from you, sir? The other, other abutte?
No, I like it. I think we should vote for it.
Okay. All right. Mr. Glass, did you have any comments or? Okay. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the special permit to allow for an in-law apartment at 30 Lakeside Road.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion moved and seconded to allow for a special permit in-law. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the board approved special permit for the in-law apartment. So that vote carried 300. And now I guess the, we can take a vote on the variance aspect of it. So I guess I'll entertain a motion, if someone wants to make one, to approve for the variance to allow for the side setback to be reduced, leaving the property non-conforming. For 30 Lakeside Road, someone would like to make that motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor? No?
Nay.
Nay.
So nay would be denial and we'll do a roll call vote on that. So Mr. Buckley?
Nay.
Okay, Mr. Praddy?
Nay.
I'm a nay also on that. So the board approved the special permit on this, that you can move forward with the in-law. That's not an issue. However, you were denied the variance aspect of it, so you can move forward with the project. However, you need to meet the building setbacks. And, you know, you could update, we would like to see a, you know, revised plan. I can't imagine it's going to change much. If it changes dramatically, we'd like to at least, you know, ratify the plan at another meeting, but if you could just update us with some tweaks or whatever you're going to do to make that, make that work. And again, this is, you know, it's a tough, tough position for us that, you know, our personal opinion, we'd love to see you move forward with the way it is, but it's just, it's tough. It's, we're taking something that's completely conforming and you're looking to make it non-conforming and that's just, it's a tough decision for, for a board to make. So. All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Okay, for a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, meeting is adjourned.